I call the August 13, 2019 work session of the Portsmouth City Council. For Adam Clark, please roll, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover. Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. I ask everybody in the room to silence their cellphones, put them on guardrails. For those not sitting at the table or their staff or the public, if you feel that you need to talk, please go out of the room. If you talk in this room, the sergeant in arms will likely escort you outside so that you can continue your conversation. With that, Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. The first presentation this evening is entitled "Active Threat." Sergeant Robert Dyer is the presenter. Sergeant Dyer is a United States Army veteran who served a combat tour supporting Operation Iraqi Freedom. He has been with the Portsmouth Police Department for over 13 years. Sergeant Dyer is the team leader for the SWAT team and has been with the team for over 10 years and is currently assigned to the Street Crimes Unit Supervisor. Sergeant Dyer has over 125 hours of active shooter training that includes being an advanced law enforcement, rapid response training certified instructor, an active attack integrated response certified instructor, as well as a citizen response to active shooter event certified instructor. Sergeant Dyer additionally has successfully completed the Department of Homeland Security Active Shooter Preparation Workshop. The second item on the agenda this evening will be a brief discussion with city council on the Virginia Crime Commission and an upcoming meeting in Richmond, Virginia. Sergeant Dyer.
How's everybody doing today?
Good, sir.
Good.
All right. So I'm going to go through a quick PowerPoint. I'm going to tell you where the police department and fire department are, what training we've put together, where we're at, and then we're going to talk a little bit about what you all can do in case this unfortunate type of event happens here. And then towards the end, it'll be open for any questions. I'm sure this lecture normally generates some questions. We'll talk about whatever you have for us. So Alert, it's the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training. It's put together in Texas in 2002 with Texas State University and the surrounding jurisdictions. This program was specific to active shooter or active threat incidents. Most training in the police law enforcement world, there's some sort of specialty, breaching or pit minute, some specialty. An active shooter, which is an up and coming, heavily focused on event, did not have any training. There was no standard. There was no anything to it. If you look at the first active shooter event in 1966, where a gentleman scaled a water tower at a university, 32nd floor, and he was there for over nine hours, the police didn't have a response, and that was the spawn of SWAT. That was the spawn of specialized tactics to combat certain situations. You fast forward to Columbine, look at Columbine, what did the police do? They waited outside for over 40 minutes before they went inside and actually attacked that intruder. Since then, we've put together tactics to do three things: stop the killing, stop the dying, and rapid casualty evacuation. So that's what this program focused on. In 2013, the FBI partnered with Alert and adopted its curriculum across the United States, deem it at the national standard. So here in Portsmouth, that is what we're using. Training is based on concepts, principles, and statistics from previous incidents. So since roughly 2000, there's been over 280, and that was to 2017, so we're approaching over 300 events. Of those events, 98.5% of those events were one solo attacker. Just one. The other 1.5% was two shooters, and they stayed together all the time. So using statistics like that, we can enhance our training tactics to, one, reduce casualties to citizens and keep ourselves safe when responding to these incidents. Here in Portsmouth, our first class of Alert integration for the police department and the fire department happened this summer in 2019. Saturday, we will have our fourth class, and August 22, we will be complete. The police department will have a full integration with this program. These pictures are actually pictures from training scenarios that we've put on with the Alert program. I spent a week in Quantico for the first course, spent 10 days in Lynchburg for the second course, and I compiled it together to create this program for the departments. The officers complete 12 hours of this training. They have enhanced medical training, treating massive hemorrhage, wound packaging, opening an airway, and hypothermia mitigation. Additionally, they undergo incident and unified command training, threshold assessment and tactics, and lifelike practical scenarios with police, fire, and EMS. As you can see, these scenarios are full life scenarios where we have role players from all over the place that come in. We moolodge them up. They have to go through the scenario from the call all the way to putting them in the ambulance, ambulance actually driving away. It's lifelike as we can get. If they say the wrong things on the radio, they will get the same response they would get if it happened in real life. So in simplified form, the way we've implemented this, dispatch notifies the police and fire of an active shooter call. Police, fire, and EMS respond. First responding police will enter the location, locate, and neutralize the shooter. Where that shooter's going to be is what we call the hot zone, right? Dangerous, hot. Put that correlation together. Once the shooter's neutralized, police will establish a warm zone and a safe area for rescue personnel to enter location. This is a huge departure from traditional fire and EMS response. If any of you are familiar with being a fireman, when they get a call, they'll stage until it's safe. Not anymore. They are coming to the area that the police established that is safe for them to come inside. Outside that location, a unified incident command with fire and police, face to face, side by side, working each other's assets together, manage this scene. During that establishment, they have a unified command. The rescue task forces, which are comprised of police and firefighters, enter the location. Two policemen, three firemen. Those policemen keep the firemen safe. The firemen also have ballistic protection. This is completely new to anything traditionally that firemen have ever done. So it's an uphill battle. It's a change in culture, and I assure you that it's being taken with great strides in open arms. The rescue task force evacuate patients directly into waiting ambulances and are transported to a high level of care, which we deem the cold zone. Cold is safe outside. So there's no more of us taking all these patients outside, dragging them to one place, triage, setting up the tents, and then evacuating. We do everything inside where it's safe. Again, this is very real, this is as lifelike as we can get for our first responders. This is what conditions them to deal and respond appropriately to these unfortunate circumstances. Again, the goal: stop the killing, stop the dying, and rapid casualty evacuation. That is the goal of this program, and it works. It's effective. I can tell you now, of all of the scenarios that we've run, of all the training evolutions we've done with the police and fire department, there has not been one training scenario by the end of the conclusion of class, they have received the call, they have entered the building, they have neutralized their threat, they have established a safe area, and had fire and paramedics inside and out the door in less than 10 minutes. That's huge. Absolutely huge, and that means we're saving lives. So, now that I see no one's running in the building with me except for maybe some of the folks in the back, I want to talk about what you can do. Homeland Security promotes run, hide, fight. You may have heard avoid, defend, deny, avoid, deny, defend. That's put on by Alert. I've gone through their course, too. They're very, very similar. They feed off of each other. It's a plan where it's going to do the same things. If you can run, run. If you hear something, there's a reason that it grabbed your attention. Some of the psychology behind some of the things and why people don't leave is because they want to rationalize everything. I'm going to give you something close to home. It's Virginia Beach. A man walking through the parking lot with a silencer on his gun was not commonplace ever, but the people that saw it rationalized it as, oh, that's a scenario for tomorrow. What? So why is he here today? Oh, they're doing construction, maybe that's what the pops are. Instead of taking a moment and saying, that's out of place, I should say something. And it just takes that awareness for us to think about it for a second and be outside of our comfort bubble and say, yep, I made the call, it's okay, that was out of place. Rather be safe than sorry, right? TSA is a great program. See something, say something, right? Very catchy. Steal it all the time. I need you to do that, too. If you see something, say something. If you can get away from it, run. If you hear shots in here, run. If you have that opportunity, where do you want to run to? Let's try exits. Let's try somewhere that you're safe, out of view. Depends how close you are, right? Leave your belongings. It's kind of like when your house is on fire. Everybody wants to grab the cat, grab the purse, grab your cellphone, grab the photo album, grab the cookbook with the family recipes, leave them, okay? It'll be fine. Leave. You are what's important. You're what's important. Keep your hands visible. Anybody tell me why we want to do that?
So you're not...
It's coming in the next slide, but why would you want to keep your hands visible?
So the police won't think that you're...
So they don't think you're a threat.
There you go. What do policemen look at all the time?
Hands.
Hands. Hands kill us, right? Hide. If you can't run, hide. Who's good at hide and seek?
All of us.
All of us?
Yeah.
All right, well, y'all better get good, then. Hide in an area outside of the shooter's view. Lock entry or hiding place and lock doors. So if you're going to hide yourself in a room, could we barricade a door? Most things in this place are pretty heavy. I don't know if y'all have moved any desks recently. They're pretty heavy. Put them in the door, stack them, right? Typically, shooters, when they're inside going through their destruction, taking human life, it's about opportunity. It's much like a burglary. Nobody's going to be there, there's going to be no confrontation. It's just innocent people. So if that door is shut, locked, barricaded, or that door is shut and barricaded, and he can only open it three or four inches, he's going to move on to something else. He's on a clock. Less than 50% of these things, they kill themselves. Only about 26% of them end in police encounter. About 11% are apprehended. In over 50% of these, there is a connection between the victims and the person. The connection can be as loose as a citizen or as close as a coworker. There is not a definitive role, but there is a connection. So think about this. Silence your cellphone. Why would we want to do that if you're trying to play hide and seek?
Because you wouldn't be very good at hide and seek if you didn't.
Call 911. Keep an open line if it's safe to do so. Why do we want to keep an open line? Because the person on the other end hasn't hung up. They're still gathering information. If they can hear gunshots and you can just get out, 6th floor, 6th floor. That dispatcher can take that information and tell us, we have an open line, they're whispering 6th floor, and we can hear gunshots. Where's that send us? We have some actionable intelligence to come help you. Okay? Super important. Fight. Anybody? Kickboxer, taekwondo, anything? No? Mr. Rowe, I know you've got something up your sleeve of EMI.
We're hiding behind Nathan.
Right. Got you. As a last resort, only when your life is in imminent danger. If you've got to pick something up and throw it, I don't think this is going to feel too good across the face, right? I can't tell you the perfect way to do it. I can only tell you what to do for you, okay? But there's a lot of things you can hurl in here. Have you ever made your wife angry? They always find things to hurl at you, right? Attempt to incapacitate the shooter. Strength in numbers. Psychology tells you most of the time, if everybody walks away or everybody doesn't want to be part of it, it only takes one person. One person from that homogeneous group, and it's contagious, and everybody jumps on. Everybody heard the 9/11 tale from the plane that crashed in Pennsylvania? Let's roll. Let's do this. One person. And it can be anybody in here. Old, young, male, female, doesn't matter. It just takes one courageous person, and it needs to be you because it may be your life.
Yes.
Okay? Physical aggression. I know some of y'all say, oh, I'd never hurt a fly. I promise you, deep down inside, you can pull out some physical aggression. That made you that way, and you need to show every bit of it to that person, because they are trying to take it out, right? So that's what to do when the shooter's here. I need you to know what to do when we show up. Again, I know, this is in words, and it's much easier to read, for me to read and for you to read, remain calm. Yeah, okay, right? Think about that. Take a few deep breaths. You will effectively lower your heart rate if you take some deep, slow, controlled breaths by a good 30 beats per minute. It's a fact. It's a tactic that we, police, use all the time in high-stress situations. Take a few breaths, okay? Compose yourself. Think about what you're going to do. Keep your hands visible. We talked about that. I need you to understand, police may not stop immediately to render aid if the threat has not been located, contained, distracted, or neutralized. What that means for you, your cohorts may be laying here injured, hurt, and we come in here because, say, he went into the kitchen, and we pass all of you, and you may be bleeding out. But until we stop the killing, we can't stop the dying.
Yes.
Does that make sense? And that's something horrible for us, especially in a school anywhere, really, but in a school where you have children. So if the police are coming in, try not to grab at the officers. They're coming to help you, I promise, but you need to understand that the priority is if they can't get to that threat, they can't help anybody else, okay? Utilize any applicable medical training you or any others have. Anybody have any medical training here? What you got?
All of the above.
All of the above, I like it.
I was EMT for years and combat medic with them.
There you go. Okay, so what's a force multiplier? How about their knowledge? So if he says, hey, can you hold pressure? Hey, can you get him off the floor? He's going in shock, he's got some hypothermia. Get him on the table.
Listen to him.
Hey, can you hold pressure? Check that out. He provided care to three other people just by his medical expertise, and if you didn't know, now you know, right? Stop the bleed. Okay, so further education. This is a government initiative. This talks about proximal pressure. Are you familiar with proximal pressure? You don't have to have a tourniquet to stop a massive hemorrhage. You can severely slow one down with proximal pressure, generally in your junctional areas, a good knee, a good elbow, things like that. This is a great program, and it's free. They'll provide some of that information. And HSI is an active shooter. How do you respond? Online at HSI, there is a module that all of you can go to. I'll have it in here. And it's what to do during an active shooter event, and you can take it online, and it'll give you scenarios, and it'll quiz you on what to do. You'll watch a video, and based on those circumstances, you make the decision. Take some time and do it. Gain that valuable information, because the information that you have today is going to save your life another day. What's not in here specifically is about making a plan. It's something we do on the SWAT team a lot, and it's rehearsing. We do drills in the Army, we did them, they were battle drills. On the team, there are officer-down drills, or this drill, or that drill, ambush drills. There are things that you repeat over and over and over again. What I mean by that is, who in here can get around their house with their eyes closed in the middle of the night?
I can't.
Probably everybody. Most of y'all could probably get around most of this building with your eyes closed. Been in here so many times, right?
I can do it in here.
But you need to consciously sit down and have a plan and walk through the plan of what to do if something goes bad.
Fine.
I need you to think about it now so you're not thinking about it in the moment.
Yeah.
And then when you have those couple of seconds, catch your breath and lower your heart rate and gain your composure. You know where your exits are. You know that you're supposed to run, hide, fight. You know that you're supposed to help somebody else provide some medical care. You know you're supposed to call 911 and keep an open phone line. Make sense?
Yes.
Right. Yes, sir.
Officer, when I was in the Navy, I was a corpsman, and we did mass casualty training. And one of the things that I was interested in, does the city do mass casualty training on a periodic basis to kind of prepare us for these kind of situations?
So the fire department, anybody know how many ambulances we have in the city?
Two.
So five. We're a pretty big city, if you didn't know. So a couple car accidents, a couple falls down the steps, a gunshot wound, something like that, you're out of ambulances, right? They do, they train in that all the time. They pull for mutual aid from the shipyard, from Chesapeake, from Suffolk. They typically have yearly scenarios. Our new policy with Alert is that we will have a yearly scenario. Now that we're fully integrated, this scenario will be a joint scenario, that we will be prepared collectively. Mass casualty incident in that terminology typically refers off to the fire department side.
Sure.
But yes, we collectively are planning to do drills. In fact, we have an active shooter meeting the 10th of September, and that will probably be on the agenda as now we've gotten through, we've gotten the police department through, we've gotten the fire department through, how are we going to implement and where are we going to start staging our next drills?
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor and members of council, we are also reinstating the CERTS program, and Mrs. Harris is working with Chief Hoffler and that team. They will be having their first meeting soon and engaging citizens, and I remember Mr. Moody some years ago brought that to our attention. The city used to have particularly a group of citizens who were trained if there was hurricane, any kinds of needs, so that is being reinstated in our city.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
Are we still the first responder for incidents on the military installations in Portsmouth?
Not all of them, no, sir. The shipyard does not have an MOU with us, so their naval assets will take care of that, and I believe the hospital and the annex on victory, they take care of their own. Some of the issues with getting an MOU and completing that go back to some verbiage and some documents that are about three times my age, that have never been changed, and it is much more difficult than has been practical yet to fix those things.
So an active shooter at the shipyard, we're outside the gate.
Yes, sir.
And on the reverse side of that, if we had a situation, God forbid, never have to have a situation, but is there any state of emergency where we can get help from some other locality or jurisdiction?
They are all coming. Mutual aid will be enacted, absolutely. It's part of the incident command structure when we have these in the training, is what resources do we have available? The medics and the medic supervisor automatically reaching out to the other jurisdictions. I can tell you, just as a matter of not even an active shooter per se, Holly Cove, the unfortunate event that happened just across the line, they reached out to us, hey, we need some police assets. They're asking, we're coming, whatever we have. And the same thing is going to apply to us. There's been numerous times if we just ask, they're going to send them. All it requires is a chief or designee request, and it's granted. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else?
On the port facility, VIG, where the first responder?
They have port police, marine police, and private security. We have done active scenarios with Coast Guard. Their sergeant-at-arms, or I don't know, military rank, was very proactive, and I think he was stationed off. They have not reached out with us to have a plan in place, per se. They have their own plan, but we are not the primary first responders for them now. We would obviously come to any mutual aid request, but we do not have a working plan with them now.
And you come to mutual aid on the shipyard and the hospital, too, as mutual aid?
Depending on the MOU.
But you were there a few weeks ago.
Depending on...
You were at the hospital when they had their thing.
Yes, ma'am. I think there were some things that were discovered well above my pay grade that they realized that there was, and it was because, and for good reason, we want to make sure that we're protected to be where we're supposed to be and that we have the proper authority to do so. And unfortunately, the way I refer to the verbiage is, we don't have joint authority there. So until that gets changed, we can't provide that resource. And that's kind of where we're at. I know that is being looked into, that was being addressed when it was addressed. The last time we did have a call of an active shooter at the shipyard, I can tell you, we went, because I was one of the first people there, and I was in the building with six other guys clearing the building, and then there was some conversations of, well, are you supposed to be there? I don't know, I'm just there because somebody asked for help. And I can tell you, as long as somebody asks for help, we're going to go as long as we're allowed to do so. Anyone else?
Well, that's, you know, just like you said, unfortunately, a lot of times it's an incident before you realize you don't have that understanding document. For example, years ago, when the scale of the whale burnt down, fire department called the Coast Guard for mutual aid. Coast Guard said, we don't have an agreement with you. It burnt down. Couple days later, they found out we did have an agreement. So there's some issues there, but what they're doing now is trying to do it now before something happens makes sense.
Well, I recently had an occasion to be with the acting assistant secretary of the Navy, who at a small gathering publicly thanked the Portsmouth Police Department for their role in that active shooter incident. Obviously, he wasn't here. He was repeating what he'd been told by people here.
Yes, ma'am. Like I said...
But it was a proud moment for me at the table with people from Virginia Beach, yeah.
Well, and it should be, because the paper said we shouldn't be there, and that was an afterthought. What was important was that we did respond. It was about six SWAT guys that ended up being the first ones to respond. They held the perimeter, and we cleared about three buildings and 30,000 square foot of commercial space. We did what we needed to. They asked for help, and we'll work the paperwork out now that we're aware. We weren't aware, it wasn't malicious. The Naval Hospital was the first thing. I was the second person in that one. Long day. Turned out to be 10-hour day. Turned out to be multiple, multiple resources, federal, local, state, and then they're trying to figure those things out. Unfortunately, it's places like that that we realize that when they go into a code white, which is their active threat situation, they lock all their outgoing phone calls out. So it really highlights the purpose that we need to have those drills and those working cooperative relationships to figure those things out and work through the kinks so that when unfortunately it does happen, we're all on the same page together.
Solomon?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, for a couple of years, we've had this discussion with the shipyard. The shipyard is unique in terms of its jurisdiction versus other federal facilities. I have been in consultation with the chief, and we've had some scenarios and some discussions in terms of, as the officer is saying, well, we have responded, and we have some grounds, but we've been waiting for DC to truly clean it up completely, and it requires some work on their part, and that's been sort of a stop-start discussion for a couple of years. The Coast Guard base is not as rigid in terms of its jurisdiction. I will simply say, in my prior life, you can have a lot of these interesting things, much like the border of Portsmouth. You need to know where the border is, and then we have what we call exclusive federal jurisdiction, concurrent jurisdiction, and those issues interplay whether or not we can enforce the criminal code in those areas or whether or not we can, as police department, respond. And so that's been an ongoing discussion for a couple of years. It's kind of, the clear answer is hung up in DC, and they need to clear it up on that end, but as the officer said, we're going to do everything we can to respond, and as the old saying goes, ask for forgiveness later.
Dr. Patton?
I was just going to say, it was about a year ago where the Navy was asking and wanting Portsmouth Police to actually come on the base to deal with domestic issues, and the answer was, we don't have such agreement, so we cannot do that. And as Ms. Asher said, it's not so much on our part. Legal has been working for years. It's that federal government, no different mayor than the Naval Hospital becoming a site where eventually we will be able to take patients who may have life-threatening, but federal government, it just takes time to get those kinds of approvals.
Other questions? Sergeant Dyer, on behalf of the city council, thank you for your professionalism. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for training. Who needs to be trained? All of us needs to be trained in this. This is a very serious matter, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, officer.
Thank you. Ready for me to go on, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, following the tragic municipal government shootings in Virginia Beach, Governor Northam called the General Assembly back to Richmond on July 9, 2019 for a special session on gun safety. The outcome of this meeting was that all of the bills were referred to the Virginia Crime Commission for review and study. Following that action, the legislators adjourned until November 18, 2019. If you recall, the request of the Virginia Municipal League was that localities would pass resolutions to support the gun control legislation and to forward those resolutions to VML. Based on the outcome of the General Assembly's special session that was very short, with the legislators forwarding all of the bills to the Crime Commission to review and study, city council decided, because it was really that Tuesday night we were going to approve the resolution, that we not go forward with the resolution since it was put off until November 18. However, on August 19 and 20, the Virginia Crime Commission is meeting to review and discuss the gun legislation referred by the legislators during the 2019 General Assembly Special Session. Public comment will be accepted during the meetings on the 19th and 20. And as such, we are asking city council's approval for staff to draft and deliver a letter from the mayor on behalf of city council, supporting the Virginia Municipal League's position that regulation of guns should be at the local option.
Let me explain, as you know, I'm on the leagues, the VML Legislative Policy Committee, I'm also on the executive committee. And simply stated, the position of the VML is that it should be local option, that local governments can elect to prohibit guns in public buildings and public places, and that it not be mandatory statewide. And so it would be, if that legislation would pass, then it would be up to every city council, every town council, every county board supervisors. It's already in the state law that firearms, weapons are prohibited in courthouses. And there's no reason why courthouses need to be safer than city halls. We need to be just as safe at city hall in a recreation facility, in a park. And so I recommend that we support the position of the VML, that it be a local option for gun control within public facilities, and public being municipal facilities.
Well, and I agree with that. I think that it should be, so we could select the government buildings that we want to do this in, I think that would be excellent, but I would have to see, that email that originally came out from the VML had a whole bunch of stuff in that email that was more specific, that I don't think we need to be involved in, but I agree to the part that localities, we should have the authority to basically ban firearms from any of our buildings that we choose.
And that's my recommendation, that ours be very simple, that it's one single-
I need that-
Yes. We don't get into magazines, we don't get into calibers, we don't get into length of the weapon, what we're-
May make a decision in their jurisdiction.
That's right. And it's, the issue is whether or not we allow weapons in city hall or at the recreation center.
And only government buildings, not the Walmart and the-
No.
No, it's just ours.
Yeah, I can support that.
And that's inclusive of any weapon, correct?
No. Yeah.
All weapons.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that that code covers that.
I don't mean-
It's specifically weapons, which definition of a firearm is something that sends a projectile by means of an explosion.
Let's keep it then to firearms, so that it's simple and we don't need it. Is that okay?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Will you draft the letter?
Yes, we will work and get the letter drafted and get it signed and sent.
We'll present ours as a written comment.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what it will be. All right, ma'am, now we're at the city council report backs.
Okay.
You have in your box and you have in front of you a copy of report backs. I will highlight them for you. I'm not going to read word for word other than some that definitely need to call your attention. I shared with you last night the telecommunication construction, so that's on here, but we talked about that last night. There is a pavilion update that Crofton CSI is finishing the punchless items related to the main mass replacement, and they will turn the facility over to Span Systems for installation of the canopy. That work is looking to be completed by Crofton by August 26, and that's when Span Systems will begin to install the canopy. After that, other facility repairs will take place, which includes restoring some of the foundation restoration, ADA items, drainage issues, electrical issues, and seat replacements will occur after the canopy installation. Also, go on, ma'am.
I was going to see if there's any questions about this first item. All right, Shannon?
Yes, I guess based on this explanation, when is the final construction due to be completed, where the whole project is done, ready for inspection?
I think the date was to be complete by November 1, and I'll ask Mr. Wright, what was that timeframe?
Good evening. The mass will be inspected and turned over to Span, so that portion, it's separate projects. It's, so the mass will be inspected and signed off on. That part will be done before Span takes over. Once Span takes over, their portion will be complete by mid-November, and then that will be signed off on, and then we'll have those other items that'll occur and that'll be ready for the next season. So the main project will be complete, which is the mass and the canopy by mid-November. All those other items that we found prior to the start of the season.
Other questions? Dr. Pat?
All right, there was a conversation, questions about private cemetery code enforcement at one of our public work sessions. And private cemeteries fall under the same property maintenance codes as other private property in the city of Portsmouth. Violations such as tall grass and debris are handled through the Department of Permits and Inspections. Concerning flooding, there are no specific regulations or requirements that deal with cemeteries that may be flooded by rainfall or other natural events. However, if it is determined that the flooding at the cemetery is impacted by drainage or failure of the city's storm drainage system, then the city would be responsible for the repair through the Department of Public Works. If the flooding is impacted by a similar drainage system issue on the cemetery property itself, that problem can be remedied through the enforcement action by the city's Engineering and Technical Services, Snowwater Compliance Division.
Any questions?
All right, city hall, mayor, vice mayor, and members of county, I call to your attention that city hall, which we're in right now, which is 801 Water Street, this building is 36 years old. It has similar issues to its sister building at 801 Water Street. Most of its building systems are at the end of their useful service life. Significant issues require repairs or upgrades to the plumbing system, elevators, the mechanical system, generator, and the IT data center, the parking garage, and flood protection for the mechanical room and fire suppression system. As you can see right now, after we have had work done on all three elevators, repairs, we have an elevator that is out right now. The elevators are, have pretty much, are reaching the end of their life cycle. There are plumbing issues that occur, there's a plumbing issue that occurred last weekend. We're very fortunate to have had two HR staff persons, Mrs. Gooden and her assistant in the building, and for some reason, one of them came up to the third floor and saw water. Immediately, they called, the public works team got out, a pipe has been band-aided, because that's what actually has to happen right now, and the water was coming between the third and the fourth floor, but that has been band-aided and taken care of as best that we can. Staff works with contractors to address these issues, those things that they cannot address themselves with the staff that we have. But I'm just calling to your attention that we are really focusing attention on this building and the many different things that we're addressing, okay? All right, Regional Broadband Board Authority. On Friday, August 8, 2019, the regional broadband members met to discuss the terms and resolutions for the creation of a regional broadband authority. This authority will consist of all Southside cities, with each city having representation on the Board of Directors. They will be primary and an alternate member, with staggering term limits for two to four years between cities. Portsmouth representatives will have a four-year term. The representatives representing Portsmouth must be determined before August 27, and the recommendation from the board meeting is that city councils will appoint their city manager and their IT directors as the persons who will serve on the board. We do have Vice Mayor that initially, last year, when we first started the discussion, who will be kept very much abreast of once the authority, and she's abreast of what is going on now, because Mr. Jones and I keep her abreast of the meetings that are going forward. At our next meeting, which will be on the 27, 26, our public works meeting, I will have Mr. Jones to address you about the authority, the board, and where we are to date, and then you all can make your decisions on the representatives.
This is a question to both Dr. Pat and Solomon. Typically, when there's enabling legislation to create regional authorities, it requires each jurisdiction to adopt the same ordinance?
Yes.
I assume that's the case here?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, that is the case, and so all of the jurisdictions are on the same timeline to get their folks appointed so that the broadband authority can stand up at the same time, so.
And the concept that's being proposed is two members from each of the five?
Yes.
Correct.
Two full members?
Correct.
Yes.
And the recommendation has been, there's been discussion, and the recommendation is city manager and IT directors.
And there be alternates? Does the enabling legislation allow?
No, because I believe one serves-
As an alternate.
As the alternate for the other. And that we-
Then you really only have one.
Correct.
One per-
Correct.
That's right. The other piece is that you will receive a copy of the agreement, and you will get that delivered in your box. It's a 17-page document that you are to read before we come back on the 26.
The agreement or the ordinance?
No, it's a, it's a-
Draft of-
Draft of the agreement for the authority.
Correct.
Oh, what does it provide?
In large part, ma'am, we'll go over this in detail. It provides, in short order, for the immediate arena, it provides for a mechanism for contribution in kind to the authority. It provides for funding for initial operations as the ring is being built out, and it speaks to the broad powers of the authority as it relates to governing the broadband ring. But that is part of the discussion that Mr. Jones will go into in further detail when we come up. The initial operational contribution, I believe, was settled at about $40,000, because it will be several years before the authority, the ring is fully built out and then commercially open. But in the interim, of course, there's going to be some operational issues that have to be followed through as we construct and move forward.
Our next meeting is on the 26, which is a Monday?
Sure.
And I'm addressing my colleagues. I think hearing this, I'm just speaking off the top of my head, that we ought to ask staff, the city manager, to do a briefing on the enabling legislation, what other authorities like this exist in the state, what's been their track record, the advantages and disadvantage of having a regional authority, why it's important for us as a region to have the authority, and why it's important for Portsmouth to be in that authority.
Okay.
I mean, this is, I think, would help city council make a decision on whether or not we think the, first, the concept of a regional authority makes sense, and then, second, whether what is proposed by the people who've been working on this makes sense. Can anybody think of anything else that staff needs to cover in that briefing?
I think the age-old question of are we equal partners with their neighbors, or are we this big because they're this big, or we have equal voting rights and that sort of thing is always important.
Is awaited, yeah.
We will provide that, and it's not weighted, we're equal.
So it's going to be much like HRT?
That's exactly right.
The way Sosa was when it started?
Right. Yes.
But not like the way the Planning District is?
No.
Or EPA?
We will provide all of this in the briefing on the 26.
Does anybody else want any additional information covered?
I think that's a good place to start.
That is.
And particularly, you know, that saying about imitation is the most sincere form of flattery, if there's been an authority out there that's been created and is going gangbusters, I mean, that would be good to know.
Yeah, there's some in the state, so we'll make sure we let you know what they're-
But we're not aware of it.
That's right.
Last year, the VML did brief about the Roanoke Authority that covers Roanoke and Roanoke County, but that's the only one that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay, everybody? And can you take a message back that we, it might be better, what's the magic of August 27?
Go on.
In terms of the stand-up date, which I believe is November, you have a 60-day notice, you have to have mailings and that sort of thing, so it sort of pushes you back up from the stand-up date to move forward. One of the issues, of course, for Portsmouth is the fact that we're moving forward, and so the more that the authority can stand itself up, the more Portsmouth can secure its relationship with the authority based on what we're doing. We're the lead of the game with Virginia Beach, and so all of that needs to be addressed by the authority board, and you can't do it without an authority.
And plus, we've got to have a public hearing.
Well, my question is, what we're doing in the city of Portsmouth, what we got briefed on last night, we can do without the authority, right?
Understood, but you won't be connected with the broader ring.
Right. You've got to be connected.
Important point.
Right, right. And that's part, that's been part of the ongoing discussion in terms of the connection with the ring, in terms of efficiencies, in terms of that, because we're leading, it's Virginia Beach, Norfolk has a, some infrastructure in the ground, Virginia Beach has some infrastructure in the ground, Portsmouth is putting infrastructure in the ground. When you want it all to, everybody to sing on the same page, unfortunately, we don't have a conductor right now for all three.
Well, again, I think it's important for us to note that advantages and disadvantages of having the authority and the conductor.
All right, we'll have that.
Okay.
Okay, and the last one on the report back is a port-side report back. The port-side contract was canceled after concurrence by city council that the site was a tangible part of the potential waterfront development deal. The contractor has restored the site to approximate conditions before the start of construction. The staff has negotiated terms for the contract closeout. The grant from the Port of Virginia is no longer considered viable for numerous reasons. The previous budget is significantly reduced by the loss of the grant and payments to the previous contractor. Note, if the current design remains the same, additional funding remains the same, let's see, additional funding would have to be restored, or if a new design bid build process with the available funding currently. This process would take a minimum of six months if we have to redesign based on the current amount of money that we have. The original project was $750,000, and we're down to right at about $300,000. The process would involve the following: verification of the project budget, a redesign to ensure the project fits within the new budget, or restore, find way, try and find a way to restore. The site plan review to ensure that the redesign complies with local, state, and federal regulations.
regulations, procurement process, contract award permitting reconstruction. I do have a piece here from Economic Development in the Economic Development Impact. According to Mr. Robert Moore, Director of Economic Development, "The portside parcel is a key piece of the marketing strategy for the waterfront development by economic development. It is considered a gateway to the larger parcels adjacent to it. Note that if the portside, if portside site is developed individually, it limits the development potential for the visitor center site. Moreover, portside is also a part of the updates of the overall waterfront development plan." Now, one of the things that had been mentioned, and I think Mr. Clark had asked this question at one time, because the city doesn't have it now, is whether or not there, if whatever determination is made, did the city have a tent that could be used for events or whatever, not take this property off of economic development opportunities? And no, we don't have that kind of tent now, but the possibility of getting that kind of tent for events or whatever that could be staged at portside is a possibility. So you asked that I bring this back, and not that you're, you know, it's a lot here to be considered. We can discuss it again at Monday meeting on the 26th, or we can bring more information back.
Well, Bill. I think a few weeks ago, I think we did discuss, I guess, at Councilman Clark's inquiry about the tent?
Okay.
About the former portside site was a tent and some structure that was not permanent in design. I thought we had the consensus to bring back some ideas along that line, me and staff.
On a temporary kind of structure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, something that doesn't hurt the marketability of the property as far as economic development is concerned. It's something our citizens could enjoy up until that comes to fruition. Portsmouth?
Yeah, I agree with Bill. I think when we talked about this before, we all like the idea of having the park setting to have the event on the waterfront. But I have no desire to spend the kind of money that's required to build a structure with the building the land back up for the flood mitigation and all of that kind of thing. I would much rather see us spend money on a large tent that could be used there for a period of time and/or other places, could then be moved out into Festival Park out here. I mean, we could buy a really big tent like that one we used to use at the Rotary Club bought in the 80s or 90s, and a whole lot of picnic tables for a couple of hundred thousand dollars, and have a real good time with it.
And this is something, you know, this goes far back, I believe we started discussing portside again in the retreat in 2017, and everybody was on board. And with the things changing, I think if we went back, you know, just like everybody's talking about a tent now, but if you went back with a blue and white scheme as original, you know, just because people love that. And another possibility, since we're doing it as a temporary site, it would be less expensive, but if we could put some of those, I don't know what the technical name is, but it's like at Marina, like a lot of these breweries are using, so the food trucks have electrical hookup and water hookup.
Right, that the food trucks can come.
We could possibly set it up and have an apron there where we could have multiple food trucks come. That way, we don't have a permanent structure, but we could have the food there for when we're having concerts, and that would be at a minimal cost, but to be able to utilize the area.
Very good.
Shannon?
Well, you know, I mean, I heard all the reasons why that we want to consider that, but we have a property right here next to the pavilion that we can use, that we can install a tent to. I don't think we need to spend any more money, any more money on portside. I think the ship has sailed. We need to look toward the future. We have Sunset Thursdays, which we have downtown today. We're fixing the pavilion, creating a more robust venue there perhaps, maybe, but I just don't see us putting any more money into portside. We talked about having that venue available for development. That's the way we need to go with it. That's just my opinion.
Okay. So?
I mean, I think, I mean, my question was, we spent $400,000 on just the design and the cleanup of the property, because there's only $300,000 left out of the 750, so that's a lot of funds that's already been used. You know, we need to determine what that end of, you know, the water is going to be used for. Is it going to be development? Is it going to be apartments? You know, just what? So I think once we get something definite, then we decide, you know, what it's going to be.
Okay, I think we have three who are asking for a concept.
Come back with-
City manager, and I agree to that.
Right. Okay.
That, don't spend any money. Bring back a concept that incorporates a tent-
Food trucks.
Hospital hardstand and utilities. And with that concept, some estimates as to what that might cost.
Right. We share, okay? That concludes my report backs, Mayor.
Debra, you passed up this resolution?
Yes, sir, that. Item is per your discussion in reference to your rules.
Uh-huh. That's on the agenda.
The item has been added to the agenda, so you won't have to add it to the agenda. And if someone wants to speak on it, they can register to sign up for it.
Once we adopt this, then our rules are in place at that moment. And so that when we get to non-agenda speakers, when we discuss, when we ask the city attorney to bring back these rules, was part of the concept of bringing it back, televising non-agenda speakers. We all agreed that if we do this, they come back on. So with this, they come back on. Is everybody home agreement?
Yes.
All right. And one last-
What would you get through?
So, if this passes, then when we get to non-agenda speakers, I'll ask you to read that paragraph that deals with non-agenda speakers.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Shannon?
I just had a point, a point of clarification, because I thought about this a little bit more last evening, and the language that's in, that we're proposing says that when an individual comes up to speak, they cannot speak to individuals, they need to speak to the council as a body. And I just need to talk this through with everybody. Suppose you had a conversation or there was an interaction with an individual, and based on the interaction with that individual, they came to council to respond to you publicly as a non-agenda speaker. Can that individual ask a question directly to the council member, or can they refer individually to a council? I'm just trying to understand what that means.
Those questions and answers, but let's say that someone comes up and says to council, "I want to talk to you about John..." All right, so that person is talking to all of council, and it's not a conversation between a person at the lectern in the audience and a member of council.
Right.
The concept was, is that that's the citizens' opportunity to address us all corporately. They have every opportunity to catch us, and they do, in Food Line, Kroger, Walmart, parking lot, wherever, at home, over the fence.
Okay, and that clarifies it for me.
But are we restricting their speech?
No.
When I restrict their speech, when we say, "Address us as a body," don't say, "Oh, Mr. Battle, you erred, and you were the corporate of this, that, and the other."
They do that in the context of saying, telling all of council. They can say, "Let me tell you all that I think the vote that Mr. Battle took at the last meeting was incorrect."
Okay, well, as long as they can use the names, because we can't say that they can't call our name out.
They can't attack people.
They, no, no, we don't want them to attack people. No, that's not what we're doing here. But we can't stop them from saying, "Okay, Shannon, you were this, this, and the other" in reference to the body, but to hide behind the body and with the intent of cutting off the specificity of what they're trying to say in reference to the folk that are involved in what they're talking about.
What they hear.
I don't feel good with that.
They want to.
It's okay to say, "Well, we talk to the body. We want you to talk to the body," but sometimes they're not talking to, about the whole body. If they feel as if they're three folk or two folk have a positive outlook on an issue, and they were trying to bring two or three more along.
That's fine.
Oh, okay.
That's all good. Yeah. That's why you have them.
Okay.
Yeah. That's perfectly all. I have one item with councils and don'ts. There's a clock running on these scooters.
On what, Mayor?
Electric scooters.
Electric scooters. And again, something I learned from the VML, that if we don't have a local ordinance in place by the end of the year, we give up our right to regulate them. And I'm not sure that we'd want to give up that right.
No, not at all.
We got to regulate.
Yeah.
Can you give us, I know you're-
We're working on it.
Okay, when will that come back?
We can have something to you on Thursday, September.
Okay, well, watch the clock.
Oh, we're watching the clock, and we've been working on this for about eight months before it even came to be a part of the legislature.
Problem elsewhere.
Well, I was going across the Campus Stella Bridge last Thursday, and there was a scooter on the sidewalk, laying on the sidewalk.
All over Atlanta.
You mean, an empty scooter?
Well, that's, well, there's issues, a lot of the jurisdictions, you watch the news, they're just littered everywhere. People ride them until they're done with them, and they just lay wherever they leave them, and it's causing a big problem.
Atlanta is inundated with them, and if you read today's paper, the mayor of Atlanta just banned the driving or the riding of any scooters at nightfall or dusk. They've had four deaths this month that have been hit at dusk by a truck, a car, or something.
I think this is one of the things where we get it in place if we have to tweak it after we do that, but let's not let the clock run out.
We will not let the clock run out. We're working on it. We have a team with Mr. Jackson.
Okay. The others? Okay, we got, we have a need for a closed session.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There are three things potentially for closed session. I don't know what your time commitments are. I don't know.
Take them all. Ball in the motion.
Okay.
Somebody offer a motion. If it's Matt on the floor.
I move to go into closed meeting, A pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.19 for the purpose of discussing vulnerable assessments, information not lawfully available to the public regarding specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities and security plans and measures related to the city's facilities, building structures, and information technology system, which would be subject to the exclusion from public disclosure in subsection 14 of Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3705.2, and where a discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize safety and security, and B pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.1 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for and appointees to boards and commissions, and C pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.1 for the purpose of discussion and consideration of appointee salaries.
Second.
The discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, call this roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.